It is a little past nine o'clock. Time to conduct the business of Wayne County Board of Commissioners for August the 3rd. And we'd like to ask everyone to ease either silos or cut off your cell phones, please. And I have the invocation today.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
I'd like for the county to remember Nannette Sutton's family. She's in her EMS department. Her father passed away last Thursday afternoon. Also, we had a former county commissioner, one of my mentors, Mr. DJ Pelk. He passed away at 94 Thursday before lunch. So we just ask to remember those families and prayers.
Thank you. Let's bow our heads. Dear Father, thank you for today. Thank you for your many blessings. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to run the affairs of Wayne County. We try to uphold the law the best that we can and do to make the decisions, the right decisions for the citizens of Wayne County. It's a difficult task sometimes, but with your guidance, we pray that we will make the right decisions. Also, let's remember this Nannette Sutton's dead family, Mr. DJ Pelk's dead family. And also, we were sad to hear the news that one of our neighboring counties, Jones County, lost our sheriff yesterday from a heart attack. Fifty-two years old. To keep Sheriff Heath's family, we keep them in our prayers. We ask that you be with our men and women in uniform. We're a military community. Be with the ones that are deployed in harm's way. Also, be with our first responders that sacrificed so much to keep us safe here in the county, whether it's EMS, law enforcement, firefighters, all of our first responders. We keep them in our prayers. And again, we ask that you give us the wisdom to make the right decisions today for the county. We ask this in your name. Amen. Mr. Barbara Raycott has the question.
We stand pleased to pledge allegiance. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the July 20th meeting?
Sure.
I have a motion on the floor. All in favor, she'll sign in the right hand. Any adjustments to the agenda, Mr. Honeycutt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We would like to add our EMS director, Dave Cutterback, to do a presentation. Move that number one under special presentations. Dave does have to go to that funeral this morning, and we want to have him talk under County Manager's comments, but he needs to be at that funeral by 9:30. So just move everything else down one.
Okay, under special presentation.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any commissioners have any adjustments to the meeting? Okay.
I just, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to add that Commissioner Foster, he apologizes for not being here. He was on a family vacation with his son in Rome, and the flight was delayed, so he apologizes to everyone.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor with modifications of the agenda. Any discussion? If none, all in favor, she'll sign in the right hand. Okay, move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do want to introduce Dave Cutterback, who is our EMS director. Dave is, had a tough couple of weeks, to be very honest with you. Dave has been vaccinated with the COVID vaccine, but Dave got COVID as well. And I wanted Dave to just really kind of talk about his experience and the encouragement that this is not over. And even though you may still be vaccinated, it's still not over. And I appreciate Dave's commitment to the organization and to our community, but I really thought it was an important message for us to hear at this time as we try to, you know, continue to move forward and on the vaccine side. So, Dave.
Good morning, everybody. Mr. Gurley, as always, I'll keep this short and sweet. Everybody's time is very valuable. So, as Mr. Honeycutt said, yes, I did, I came down with COVID. It was a very interesting experience. I've always prided myself in the fact that I'm a very physically fit person. I eat good. Tried to take good care of myself. Unfortunately, didn't really have much of an impact at this point. When the question comes up, what symptoms that I had, the answer was yes. You name them, I had every single symptom, almost to the point where it became comical, where I would say, of course, this is the next phase of this process. I don't kid myself, when you're sick, you have a lot of time to think about things. And I don't kid myself, there's people that have it a lot worse than I do. And even though I felt absolutely rotten and miserable, there's people that are sicker than I was, and there's people unfortunately that are dying from this process. The main thing that went, that hit me throughout this process, as sick as I was, I have a ton of remorse. And the remorse that I have is I made people sick that I care about. And so that's really a lot that I'm kind of navigating through right now, is to understand that people I care for, their lives changed because I got them sick. And it goes against everything that I am as a person. It goes against why I believe I was put on this earth. I was put on this earth to take care of people. So this is something that I have to work through at this point. To end this, the one thing that I do have to say is it, I took an oath when I was hired for this position, and my oath was to take care of this community. It would break my heart to know that anybody in this room got as sick as I did, or worse. It would break my heart to know that one of my teammates got as sick as I did, or even worse. It would break my heart to know that any of you got as sick as I did, or even worse. And it would break my heart to know that anybody in this community got as sick as I did, or even worse. So this is just a request for every household, every person, every citizen of Wayne County, is to do what you need to do to stay healthy. I've never been so sick in my life. And again, as sick as I was, the remorse is probably the worst part about it. Okay? I do appreciate y'all's time and the opportunity to come up here and talk.
I've called Dave and apologized. I feel responsible for putting him in that position. We got a, we were on a wreck, and when I pulled up on the wreck, we had to cut a girl out of a car, and I had a wellness check. And the person didn't give me the whole information at that time, and the sheriff was there and had to make force entries, and time everything kind of got around, find out what was going on, found out that there was a possible COVID issue, and we didn't know it, and I feel responsible for putting Dave and all the people in that position. And I called Dave and told him I apologize. And of course, I got it with Larry. In the meantime, they had already made entry, and then they found out. But anyway, I'm just, I'm publicly telling you that I apologize for not getting all the information.
No problem. I signed up to go into every situation regardless of what the circumstances are, and I will continue to do so. It's my job to take care of people in this community, and I will always do that.
Well, I appreciate it.
This is on me, sir.
Well, I just, you know, I can say, well, I'm kind of initiated to, when the person called me, initiated the call, and, you know, and unfortunately, he had deceased, but anyway, I just wanted to publicly tell you that.
Mr. Chairman, Mayor, first off, I just, I admire you for coming and sharing your health issues with all of this community, because that's something that is very private, and I admire it. And I just hope that people see that this is a serious thing. It's a serious thing, and it could happen to any one of us. And I'm just glad you're here.
Thank you.
To talk about it, you know? So whatever you need to do to get back whole, we support you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you all. Y'all be safe.
Mr. Chairman, I did want to let you know that I did ask Dave what he was comfortable with before he did come in and make this presentation. So, and it is, like Commissioner Williams said, it took a lot of courage to say that, and we appreciate what Dave has done and what Dave means to this community.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all. Be safe.
Okay. Chair.
Next is a motion to adopt Goldsboro Wayne Purple Heart Proclamation. That is on page nine of your agenda packet, and our county clerk, Carol Bowden, will be reading the proclamation.
On behalf of the Veterans and Patriots Coalition, I'm proud to read this. Whereas the original Purple Heart, known as the Badge of Military Merit, is the oldest military decoration in the world in present use, and whereas the Purple Heart was established by General George Washington on August 7th, 1782, during the Revolutionary War, as the first award made available to the common soldier to recognize outstanding valor or merit. And whereas, following nearly 150 years of disuse, the Purple Heart was reestablished by the President of the United States on February 22nd, 1932. And whereas, the Purple Heart is awarded to military and civilian members of the U.S. Armed Forces who are wounded by an instrument of war in the hands of the enemy, and posthumously to the next of kin in the name of those who were killed in action or die for wounds received in action. And whereas, the citizens of Goldsboro and Wayne County have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have served their country in the armed forces. And whereas, the veterans have paid the high price for freedom by leaving their families and communities and placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas, many citizens of our city, county, and state have earned the Purple Heart as a result of being wounded while engaged in combat with enemy forces construed as a singularly meritorious act of essential service. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city, that the Goldsboro City Council and Wayne County Board of Commissioners do hereby honor the service and sacrifice of our nation's men and women in uniform wounded or killed by the enemy while serving to protect the freedoms enjoyed by all Americans. Now therefore, be it further resolved that jointly, the Goldsboro City Council and the Wayne County Board of Commissioners commend the Board of Directors of the Goldsboro Wayne Purple Heart Foundation for honoring Purple Heart recipients at its annual banquet on August 7th, 2021, as a special tribute to those service members who have received the Purple Heart and the families of Purple Heart recipients who are deceased. Witness our hand and the seals of the City of Goldsboro and the County of Wayne, Goldsboro, North Carolina, this, the third day of August, 2021.
I'd like to make the motion that we adopt the Goldsboro Wayne Purple Heart Proclamation.
I have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? If none, all in favor, she'll sign in the right hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Next, we'll have the swearing in of Kayla Whitley as the Assistant Clerk to the Board, and I will turn that over to Carol, and Kayla.
Before I read you the oath, I just want to share with y'all that Kayla's worked really hard. I'll get emotional because she's had a tough year, but I'm so proud of her. So with that being said, put your right hand on the Bible, please, ma'am. Or no, left hand on the Bible, Rachel. Look at this, right? And at the end of me reading this, just say, "I do," or I will, okay? "I, Kayla Whitley, do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as Assistant Clerk to the Board of Commissioners of Wayne County, so help me God."
I do.
"I, Kayla Whitley, do swear that I will well and truly execute the duties of the Office of Assistant Clerk to the Board of Commissioners of Wayne County, according to the best of my skill and ability, according to law, so help me God."
I do. Thank you, ma'am. Proud of you.
You got a speech prepared?
Mr. Chairman, I do want to follow up with what Carol said as well. Kayla's really done a good job working as the administrative assistant to me and chip in the office, and really picking up very quickly on the rules and duties and responsibilities of Deputy Clerk, and we just, as Carol said, we are very proud of it. Next is our employee service pens, and we'll start that.
Is that okay with you?
Yeah.
All right, and the first is Sharice Taylor Presley from the Health Department. Kiana Spate with the jail. Tanner Smith, Sheriff's Office. Paul Reed, SRO. Adam Rayner, Environmental Health. Erin Kitchen, Health. Andrew Cox, Sheriff's Department, Sheriff's Office, excuse me. Antonio Castaneda, Sheriff's Office. Sanika Caldwell, DSS. Teresa Brown, Tax Office. Thank you, Teresa. Tamara Williams, DSS. Brenda Weiss, Health Department. Brendan Rouse, Sheriff's Office. James Parker, Facilities. Alexi Padilla, DSS. Jordan Michael Neeson, Ford with the jail. Keisha Martin, DSS. Ebony Jones with the jail. Haley Grimes, DSS. And Jasmine Amerson, DSS. All right, we're going to move to the five-year. Beginning with Melissa Stansel, Emergency Services. Mr. Ryan Preble with Information Technology. Nathaniel Neal with the jail. Cynthia Stewart, DSS. Anna Richards with Health. All right, that's it. We'll move to the 10-year. Alicia Sutton with Facilities. Joel Rose, Facilities. Sharon Williams, DSS. Clementine McConnell, DSS. Melvin Coker, Solid Waste. All right, 15-year. I see Dexter Stevens is not in here, and he's getting his 15, and Crystal Harden, EMS. All right, and we have one 20-year pen recipient, Amy O'Connor with DSS. And one 30-year, Benita Whitfield with DSS.
I was going to say, she just went home.
And that's it.
30 years.
Next, we do have a presentation from the Chairman of an Executive Officer of the East Point, MCO, Sarah Stroud is here, and we appreciate Sarah and her team and the work that they do. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you very much. There's a mouse right below you. If you'll pull out that little cord, and you can... I can drive? You can drive. We'll see if I can do two things at once here. Anyway, thank you so much for allowing us some time this morning. I want to be really respectful of your agenda today, and Mr. Honeycutt has already told me that I went from 30 minutes to 10 minutes, so gonna talk fast, but I want to, did he just step out of the room? Well, when he comes back, I really, or maybe while he's gone, I really wanted to invest a minute of my time to say thank you to him. Don't tell him I said this, but he is incredible. He was an awesome board member, and we really did appreciate his service. We will miss him, but look forward to Commissioner Foster serving on our board as well. I've spoken with him on the phone, was looking forward to meeting him face to face today, but that'll happen another day. I also do want to recognize a couple of other people before I begin. We're very fortunate to have with us another one of our Wayne County Board members today. If you would stand, Ms. Nancy Moore. This lady is another incredible board member for East Point. She has served as the Chair of our Consumer and Family Advisory Committee, and is the Vice Chair for more years than I can count. And she takes that role extremely seriously. She also is so dedicated and committed to the crisis intervention trainings that we do in, not only Wayne County, but other counties as well. And I don't know that she's ever missed one. She goes and stays all week, and we just appreciate her commitment, and even the fact that she's here at 9:00 on a Tuesday morning. So I want to thank her, and if you wouldn't mind in joining me and giving her a hand. So don't tell him what I said about it now that he's back. We do appreciate you, Craig, and thank you for, for serving on our board, and we will miss you.
Okay, I appreciate it.
All right, let's see if I can drive here pretty quickly. So just briefly again, I'm Sarah Stroud, and I serve as CEO. As you know, East Point is the managed care organization that serves 10 counties, including Wayne County and eastern North Carolina. And I have with me today our Chief of External Operations, Victoria Jackson. Victoria's been with East Point for a long time and knows a lot about the things we do. So if I can't answer any questions you have today, Victoria's here, so we're in good shape. So briefly, I want to give you an operations update. I want to talk about some of the things specifically we've been doing in Wayne County. Victoria will share an update on the provider network, and then just share a little bit about East Point at the very end. So as you know, we are not allowed to, by law, to provide direct services to the members. However, we do that through our network of contracted providers. And so they are how the people in the community get the services they need. The way we have chosen to support them, not only in Wayne County, but in all our counties, to keep them stable and to keep them going, even during a pandemic that happened, seemed like overnight, and now just won't go away. Over the last several years since 2017, we've invested over $27 million in rate increases. That way is the most fair and consistent way to support the providers across the community. So if you're a provider that provides outpatient, no matter where you are in our 10 counties, and we do a rate increase, then it helps you. So I wanted to talk about that, and I'm going to skip those other two, because I'm going to hit those as we go. As I talk, I really want you to think about what are Wayne County's priorities. I would love to hear from you. I left you annual reports in my business card at your places, so if you think of something that I don't cover today, that you have a question, or something you want us to pay attention to, we are here to serve you and Wayne County, so please let me know. So some exciting news to share this morning. Last Monday, I believe it was, DHHS made the announcement for the recipients of the tailored plan that will be starting next July, about 11 months from now actually. And East Point was selected as one of the tailored plans, so we're, we're very jacked up about that. We've been working so hard for so long on that. The RFA was released right before Thanksgiving in November, so our dedicated team worked through Thanksgiving, they worked through their Christmas, they worked through their New Year's holiday, but we were really proud of the package we submitted and have been rewarded by receiving that, that award. So let me just talk a little bit about what that means. There are going to be standard plans. There already are standard plans. They became effective July 1 this year, just a few weeks ago. And then there's tailored plans. The standard plans will manage the behavioral and the physical health for the less severely impaired. Probably about 80 to 90% of the population will be served under these standard plans, which are private companies. The remaining, the most severely impaired, the most vulnerable, will be managed by the tailored plans across North Carolina. And what is different from what we do now is that we just do the behavioral health now. We will add the physical health component moving forward next July of '22. It's very complex. I just boiled it down to a few sentences, so let me know if you have any questions. A little bit about East Point. We have 304 employees. 28 of those live in Wayne County, and I believe that represents about $1.5 million in salaries and benefits for those 28 employees that are in Wayne County. I know, I know the tax base is important to you as commissioners. We really pride ourselves on the diversity of our organization, and as you can see in the pie chart, that really breaks down our, our diversity. We have about 47% Caucasian, 42% African American or Black, and 10% Native American. We have a strong Native American community in our southeastern counties, and 1% Asian Briefly about our budget, we are at $351 million this year. Our fund balance is at $138.6 million. But I always like to go to that last number, because that's where it's really, what, what it boils down to. After you take away all the assignments that we make, we have $19.2 million. That is unassigned. On this pie chart, it's all of our counties and the percentage of covered lives that you make up. So Wayne County, there is 16%. I can't really see it, but trust me, it says 16% out of all of our counties. You're our second largest county. And then I like to relate that to the amount of services or claims that are paid in Wayne County. And out of our total amount of claims paid, you comprise 19% of those claims. And here's the breakdown on those claims. I believe going back to 2018, I think it's really strong to note that the claims in 2018 were over, just around 40 million. And this year, past year, we've paid almost $49.5 million in claims. So the amount of, of services provided has continued to rise. And even the difference between '20 and '21 is over $2 million. Wayne County provides $42,000 in maintenance of effort. We always allow the counties to tell us where they want that maintenance of effort to go, because we want it to go directly back into the county that makes that contribution, and Wayne County has chosen for that to go to your family drug court. So in terms of members or enrollees, the total Medicaid population in Wayne County is 38,213 today, and out of that number... And out of that number, 42, 58 received a service last year in '21, fiscal year '21. We also have some state funds that is always very limited, because that comes out of the General Assembly. And we were able to serve almost 2,000 people with state funds last year. The last bullet there, we do have an access to care call center that operates 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, 365 days a year. And I think it's always interesting to note, we had about 4,600 calls that came in last year to the call center. I don't know that there's a direct correlation, but it does relate very closely to the members served at 42, just over 4,200. Another thing we're proud and excited to tell you about, East Point has always had to have accreditation. But with the tailored plan, we were required to seek a new and different, and quite frankly, more difficult accreditation. We got that done in March of this year, and I'm excited to tell you that we scored 99.67 points out of 100, and received full accreditation for three years. Not all of the managed care organizations in North Carolina can make that same claim. And kudos to our team. Also, didn't recognize, we have Brooke Mickelson, who is your community liaison with us today. Brooke, Victoria, many other people worked very hard on this accreditation as well, while working on getting ready for the tailored plan. This is where I'm really gonna move quickly. You have this presentation in your materials, but I want you to know some of the things that we are specifically doing in Wayne County. I already mentioned about the rate increases. There's probably nothing we can do that's stronger than to support the providers that serve the members. Over the last two years, we have awarded grants to Wayne County for $120,000. One of the grant went to the post overdose reversal response team, and also we're funding a position for the family drug treatment court. Some of the things that we have implemented preparing for the tailored plan, we have just implemented this Reconnect program. And that's an app that people who are in recovery from substance use can have on their phone. And by doing the things that are indicative of recovery, they can actually earn credits that they can trade in for money. So, that's a fairly new program, and we're having seen some good success on that already. We do administer $68,000 in funding for the Wayne 4-H Prevention Program. And in just the last year, we donated 204 Narcan kits to help prevent opioid overdoses. People coming in and out of the jails is something that I know is important to you as commissioners. It's important to us as a managed care organization. So, every day, we look at the list of people who are being discharged and work to transition, if appropriate, transition them either into care or back into care, once they are released from detention or jail. I mentioned Ms. Nancy and the crisis intervention training. Cannot say enough positive things about that. And Wayne County has really supported this program for a long time. We just graduated another class on July 22, and I think it was a full class. I think there were 21, 22...
Down to 19.
Down to 19, still exciting. That's a lot of people to commit from law enforcement to be in that training. So, thank you again for that. Brooke is very involved in that, too. So, thank you. I think I'm going to just highlight one on this slide, maybe a couple. So, TCLI, that stands for Transition to Community Living. We have 63 people from Wayne County. And what that means is, when someone comes out of an institution, maybe Cherry, maybe something else, then we work to transition those folks back into the community, so they can be active and productive members in the community. And we're currently have, we currently have 63 people in Wayne County that we work with on an ongoing basis. The last thing is something new for us. We're implementing Oxford House programs. So, again, this is directed at substance use recovery. And I'm happy and proud to say that our, we have two homes, and one of those is located in Wayne County. So, we'll keep you posted on that as that moves forward. We also are working on a curriculum with AHEC and UNC around motivational interviewing, which is a very solid technique that we use in our mental health population. And we're working on moving that into our developmentally disabled population as well. We also have a whole person care pilot program with UNC and the Carter Clinic. And I know I'm going really fast. Just briefly, I'll mention here, during COVID, we partnered with Hope for NC. And what I would want you to take away from this is Hope for NC not only targeted the Medicaid enrollees and the members we serve, but it targeted the entire community. So, there was a lot of effort to help people understand and improve awareness around mental health. As we all know, COVID has had a tremendous effect on the mental health and well-being of all of us. So, we have worked with the general population during the time of COVID. I talked fast, I talked a lot. Any questions before I turn it over to Victoria?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Can you enlighten me a little bit more on the post overdose reversal team?
I'm gonna ask Victoria to do that. And I'll just have her come to the podium, and she can start her part of the program. How we doing on time, Craig?
Good.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for allowing us to come and speak before you today. That particular grant is a grant that we had administered since 2019. Wayne County chose to utilize its $50,000. They chose to utilize it for the post overdose reversal team. And that team targets substance use. You know, they are combating opioid, the opioid epidemic. They're looking for resources in the community, any gaps or needs in services around substance use. They're coming together and looking for interventions.
Okay, great.
Great. You're welcome.
Provider network. East Point has a strong and robust provider network. We pride ourselves in ensuring that our network is stable, because we know that our members have to receive services. We know that that's the most important thing. Our CEO, she stays on us. You know, and anytime that there's a decision that's being made around the business, our members' care is in forefront of it, excuse me. So, briefly today, just gonna give you a high-level overview. I know that time is limited of our provider network. East Point statewide, we partner with 600 providers. And those providers offer 1,700 point-of-care options. That means that the residents or the members that's eligible within Wayne County can access our statewide network for services. Within Wayne County, and that's physically located here in Wayne County, we have 32 provider agencies. We have four licensed independent practitioners. Those are individuals who are licensed, such as a licensed clinical social worker, that have their own practice. We have one hospital that we contract with, and we also have two state facilities here that we contract with, and that's Cherry and O'Berry. So, that's a total of 39 providers with 65 sites within Wayne County. And that's throughout the county, from Goldsboro to Mount Olive to La Grange. Currently, we have no waitlist for behavioral health services. And what that means is that for those services that we provide, the division is charged with what we call the clinical coverage policies, the service definition, whether it's outpatient services, whether it's residential services. Right now, we do not have a waitlist. We work really hard to ensure that our individuals have access to the care.
Excuse me, that's probably the most important slide that I've seen out of this presentation.
Yes, sir.
That's awesome.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And a service overview, not gonna go through all of these services. And actually, all of the services are not even listed on here. We could spend days talking about the service array in North Carolina. But it's important to know that here are some of the community-based services that we have in our service array. Applied behavioral health, applied behavioral analysis therapy, that's a service for children with autism. The Surgeon General and the American Pediatric actually coined it as the most effective treatment for those individuals who's on the autism spectrum disorder. ACT Services, you know, that's for our Intense Population, individuals who have severe mental illness. It's a team approach, and it's a multidisciplinary team approach, actually. And again, it's for the severe mentally ill. Again, not gonna spend a whole lot of time going through this, but just know that this is just a sample of the community-based services that we have. Mobile Crisis, do wanna spend a moment on mobile crisis services 24/7. We have about three mobile crisis teams that serve Wayne County. It's a 24/7. You can contact the mobile crisis team directly, or you can contact our member call center. We have no wrong door to access to care. And they respond to individuals in the community that may be having a behavioral health crisis. Now, that doesn't mean that, it's actually two levels with the emergence. So, there's the individuals who have imminent risk to death themselves or to others. For those particular calls, our member call center will contact first responder. Once first responder goes out, and if they deem that it's a safe environment, then they can actually request that our member call center contact the mobile crisis team, and they will actually go out on the scene and evaluate the individual. There is a two-hour or less response time. Typically, it's less than two hours. Our callers can arrange directly with the service provider through East Point, like I mentioned before. And it's important to note again that the collaboration with crisis providers and law enforcement to ensure most appropriate response time. And lastly, Sarah mentioned this, she touched on this previously, rate increases. You know, it is so important that we stabilize our provider network, because without them, individuals will not be able to get the services that they need. $6.5 million in rate increases for providers since the onset of COVID. We wanted to make sure that they were stable during that tough time. And, you know, it's still a tough time now. We approved an additional 5% rate increase for innovation services across the board earlier this year. $250,000 in grants for fiscal year 2020. And that's to work on initiatives that the county's deemed that is most important to them. And then also, our value-based care. The division is really pushing for a more value-based arrangement with our providers. And so, we have been working diligently to try to get some of those types of arrangements in place. It's about not just providing care to our individuals, but providing quality care. And so, with those types of arrangements, providers can receive incentives for providing quality outcomes, you know, keeping individuals out of the hospital, because we want individuals in the community with their families. Most recently, we received approval from North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services to utilize a value-based arrangement for our In-Lu-Of service called Family Center Treatment. It's a community-based service. And we're also working on a value-based arrangement for therapeutic foster care, utilizing what we call the fostering solutions model. All right, any questions? Well, I'll turn it back over to Sarah to finish this out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Victoria. Victoria not only manages our provider network, but she also moved into that role from covering all of our clinical operations. So, Victoria has a tremendous base of knowledge and works very hard for East Point and for our members. Really quickly, I think it's important for you to know, again, where East Point ranks with other LME MCOs across the state. And as she was talking, I thought of one thing I probably should have mentioned when I was talking about the standard plans and tailored plans. When we submitted our proposal to become a tailored plan, part of that was to partner with one of the standard plans. So, we are working with WellCare. You may be familiar with them. And they will bring to us, as we become a tailored plan, they will bring the physical health network, because they already have that in place, and the pharmacy benefit that we will also be responsible for. So, we're working well with them, and they will be huge support to us moving forward. And hopefully, we will be to them as well. In 2020, I just wanna point out that there are state benchmarks that every LME MCO must, is required to meet. And we exceeded all those benchmarks again in 2020. And they are listed there. We have to answer calls within 30 seconds, resolve complaints. Probably the last one may be the most important, and that is processing claims. If a provider submits a clean claim, we get that turned around quickly, because a lot of these providers are small. I mean, you know them in the community, and their turnover on their claims payment is really critical for their stability. And then lastly, I wanna talk about this Annual Perception of Care Survey that the state does. They survey members, adults, youth, and families. So, it's not us saying this, it's not the commissioners saying this, it is the people we serve. And what I want you to take away from this is that for the third year in a row, East Point is the top-performing LME MCO in the state on customer service, on this Perception of Care survey. And I'm not gonna go through all these, except to show you, East Point is the purple line. The other LME MCOs are represented there as well. But in each one of these slides, you can see East Point is the purple line. And you do have this in your handouts, if you wanna look at that a little bit further. So, with that, any final questions, Craig? I hope I came in close.
You did.
I appreciate your time and your attention. I really do appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, first off, thank you for what you do in the communities, not just our communities, all the communities that you showed us in the graphs. It's definitely a need here. I appreciate your compassion for these individuals and your hard work. Is there anything we ever could do, please, you know, bring to our attention?
Thank you so much. The support we receive from Wayne County is incredibly important to us. As I've said, we have loved working with Mr. Honeycutt on our board, and we look forward to working with Commissioner Foster as well. Thank you so much.
I'd like to add in the book about Brittany Jones. That shows you that young people take diversity and make positive. And I'm sure she's just one of many, but I mean, that's, that kinda stuff adds to the program.
Thank you.
Chairman, I too wanna thank you for coming today. It was a good presentation, but as you and I have discussed, I would hope that you can get the number of employees here in Wayne County up from where it currently is.
We did talk about that, and I have not forgotten. So, we'll look forward to working on that as your...
Thank you so much.
Construction continues. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, under unfinished business, is a presentation on jail report by Dan Mace and Todd Davis of Mosley Architects.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Chairman, Board of Commissioners. Again, my name is Dan Mace with Mosley Architects. With me, and he's gonna wave his hand back there, is Todd Davis. Todd Davis performed our jail needs projections for the county a couple of years ago prior to COVID. And we're here to kind of update you on some detail regarding the options that are available for the county to consider regarding... to consider regarding your jail, future jail needs. We performed a couple of years ago, a replacement, a few years ago, the projections and updated those. As a result of that, we ended up designing and constructing the jail annex on Williams Street. That was an emergency procurement. It was intended at that time, and I think George Woods was manager, to be a phase one of a multi-phase replacement jail option because you had severe overcrowding at the time. Your current jail facility, as you know, is in the 30-year category of age. I think it's important for the general public to realize that jails age what I call in dog years because they can't be closed, they're 24/7 operation. Its occupants are trying to destroy everything in it and damage whatever they can. And they're just, they're just, they take a lot of abuse more than any other county facility that a county constructs. And so a 30-year facility, you to be commended for the shape of your current jail as it sits today. I think Kendall and his staff do a fantastic job maintaining this facility. The county asked us, in addition to the original study, is just to give you a fresh look, since it's been a couple of years, a few years since the annex was open, to make sure that it was in the county's best interest to continue on with replacement jail option on Williams versus looking at maintaining and/or expanding the facility here and operating the two facilities as you have. So we did that and I will tell you the, what I call the bones of your existing jail facility, the structural, our structure engineers looked over the building and found it to be in good, sound, structural shape. There were some movement cracks, that's typical over a 30-year period of a building. There's some precast areas that need to be repaired, but it was minor. I think where we saw the most need for immediate improvement or improvement, should you stay in your existing facility, was really in the aging of your systems. They're just kind of reaching end of life. And so we've enumerated those. Obviously, you know, given the growth in the county and the projected needs, it's very difficult to expand your facility where it is. It's kind of in a build-out location. It's a vertical, you know, multi-story building. I think one of the perennial problems, I think the sheriff can attest, is that there's occupied administrative space underneath the jail bed housing areas. And any inmate will know they're going to attempt to flood constantly, you know, bad stuff, you know, down below and that's been a big problem. And that will continue to be a big problem as you continue to operate this jail facility. Another thing that's a deficiency from an operational standpoint, safety and security is paramount. You have a lot of dormitory-type beds versus hard-selled areas. Given your population and as the population has grown over the last 30 years and changed, those dormitory beds are much more difficult to operate safely than a celled environment because of the highly more aggravated nature of its occupants. And it's just changed over the duration of its lifespan. And I think that's a big deficiency. We did look at adding on, where we could add on to the existing facility and how that might happen. Some of the more critical needs are what we call the core spaces of the jail. Core things like intake booking capacity, your kitchen preparation capacity, your laundry capacity. Those type of things are core spaces that a jail has to have as its population increases and ability to accommodate those. So those are, need to be replaced because what you have is inadequate even for what you're operating now. So again, that was part of the initial phase-two replacement option was that core. So I looked at that and prepared some, what I felt like were hard costs to not only repair and replace and update your current facility, but also expand those core facilities. And that was about 20,000 square feet needed to add, to add those core facilities here downtown. And the cost estimate ended up being somewhere in the $17 million range, just for, just to share you with you that number. There are other costs that were identified in the study that would be needed, that were not included in that $17 million number. And that would be, for instance, if we were to have to expand the core on the existing sheriff's parking lot, we've then in turn got to replace the parking. Parking's already, as most, everybody knows, is a situation already, is a detrimental situation. So we would need to add parking. If it were to be a structured parking lot, 100 spaces would be in the neighborhood of $3 million on top of that $17 million to accommodate that parking. Surface parking would be cheaper, but it takes real estate. So again, those are things for you to chew on as you consider the best option for the county. There's also, and what you're operating right now are some, what I think is the biggest, one of the biggest critical items and something we'll be addressing in the near future and report back to you with, is the staffing inefficiencies for operating essentially two jail facilities that you have right now. Again, the annex was an emergency. You know, the plan was to relocate it, connect it, and operate that one singular facility. Some of the examples of the staffing inefficiencies that you have is the need now to transport meals to and from the annex from here. And that obviously requires officer transport. So that's constant, three times a day. The other inefficiencies would include the inmate transport that's required. From the intake here downtown, you then, to move them into housing in the annex, requires that same transport back and forth in addition to having to operate within this facility. So there's also some duplicate functions at the annex necessary, including medical, administrative functions. There is, has to still be another intake over there because you're having to safely move them into that facility. So all that is something we'll be looking at and coming back to the board with in terms of looking at the staffing implications of staying here versus replacing over there. And I think that's a big one because that's a recurring cost. You know, if you look at jail operations and total project cost or total cost of operating and owning a jail facility, probably 75% of that is its life cycle cost, maintenance, staffing, not just the initial capital cost of building bricks and mortar. So I think it's important for you to be, you know, educated about what those implications between these two options would be. And that's what Todd will be working that up, working with the sheriff, to look at the staffing savings or implications on both options. Another one is that the addition that we had planned to replace this facility, that option, has a much more efficient, what we call a radial design layout. It actually provides for the actual types of beds that you're going to need to safely operate the jail facility. But also the numbers of those and the way we can efficiently supervise and manage that facility is much more efficient than what you have currently. Again, when you built this facility here, it was a different era. And that's changed, but we have found some significant ways to increase staffing efficiency to safely operate a jail in what we're proposing on Williams versus what you have. Just an example would be a control room. You have multiple control rooms on different floors. Every control room is a 24/7 post according to North Carolina jail standards. A 24/7 post means not one person. They have to sleep, they have to go on vacation, they have to be trained. One post represents typically at least four people. Usually it's a four-point, in between four and five people that the county has to hire and pay every year. And those, you can see that somewhere that, you know, each post is around, comes about 200,000 a year impact. So if I can save just one post, then that has significant cost implications over a lifespan of a building. So again, I just wanted to make you aware that that's what we'll be doing and coming back to the board to present is where we feel the two options differ in terms of that number as well. So I'd like to offer, that's a quick overview of what we've done thus far and like to offer it up for your questions, comments this time.
Mr. Chair, I did have a question that as you are refining this, that you all research the use of COVID dollars. And specifically, I noticed in, there've been several seminars online through the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. And one of the issues that they brought up on facilities was that if you could show a direct impact on reducing the spread of viruses going forward. And they're not only looking at today, but also in the future. And specifically, we're talking about where you were having congregation of populations. And undoubtedly, if we are moving from a dormitory style of a jail to a more singular or dual occupants, that would qualify in my mind. I'd like you to do some exploration on that.
I think that's an interesting concept. That's something, if we can make a convincing argument, that would certainly be.
Well, if we find that in other areas, they are using that for that. And maybe you could coordinate that with Allison and we could reach out to Treasury to get a ruling on that.
I do know that one of the biggest things that we've been implementing in our new jail designs, that of course the new one would have, is much more negative pressure or negative pressure type secure environment for communicable diseases. You know, we had those before. We had, you know, TB issues in jails and other communicable immersive and that sort of thing that, you know, were issues. But of course, the pandemic has really brought that to forefront of how it can really be a danger. So I think we're seeing a lot more requests to increase the amount of negative pressure cells, holding cells, that sort of thing. And medical, obviously, has increased in needs there. And our ability to carve those out and pursue funding that might be available for those type of infrastructural improvements, I think is a great idea.
Sure, that's where everything's kind of going to on the funding anyway is ventilation, you know, positive pressure type, you know, as far as making sure that we have better ventilation through that. And I would think that would qualify and for that part, we could be the first to start it.
Yeah, I think that's a great, that's a great idea. We'll certainly look into that.
Right.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair, and we actually all went and we toured the current facility over here. And there were some things that we noticed, how inmates, you know, were kind of like living. And I know that on a humane level, the new levels are quite different than a jail that was built 25, 30 years ago. So can you explain a little bit more on a humane level, what we will be facing if we do get another facility?
Well, certainly, Commissioner Williams, I think that's important to know that most of, not all of your inmate population, but most are pre-trial. So they're granted rights because they're not been adjudicated and they're awaiting trial. So the state jail standards, the current jail standards that have been just recently have changed through the last 30 years. And they've all been toward, it's not just inmate humane treatment, but also the staff and the officers that work in that facility. It's incumbent upon us to make sure they have a safe environment, working environment and humane working environment as well. But all of that's been found, creating a more humane, by humane, it's not like, you know, they're, you know, have all these, you know, comfy couches and that sort of thing. It's really access to, inclusion of natural daylight. So they have a reference of what time of the day it is, whether it's sunny, you know, finding, you know, just giving elbow room, the amount of day room space is required by standard has increased. The amount of, you mentioned air exchange, that's improving, the indoor air quality requirements are better. So all of those kind of things are designed so that you create an environment that's not a hostile one. But you want them to be, for their time in your jail, to be safe and not be antagonized by its environment. And so I think that's where it kind of comes into how the standards have matured over the years to create that more of a humane space, multipurpose space. So you can bring in, you know, I really was fascinated with these ladies that just presented, you know, alternatives to incarceration, GED, chaplain services, religious services, all geared around trying to keep these people not from coming back. And I think that's important because that really saves it and improves your community, improves the safety and security of your community, and it decreases the future need for additional jail beds. All of those are what the new standards are really focusing on trying to do for counties. And so, and again, a grandfather facility, your grandfather, you don't have to do those, but, you know, those are intangible benefits of a new space.
I think the whole board as a whole would like, whatever we do to make it, design it to be more efficient, either for maintenance, cleaning, you know, so we have, we recognize the long-term savings of whatever we do from here on out. Because it's not just today, but long-term, you know, savings to go on with.
Yeah, and another great point, in our study, when we looked at your existing facility, it was not a destructive, extremely detailed investigation. Our engineers came in and documented what was readily apparent. And what I think, you know, if you want to look at an overview of where their findings were, well-maintained, but you're nearing end of life on almost mechanical systems, electrical systems, security system. It's just going to be a constant maintenance issue and it's going to get, be constantly worse. Because again, you're at 30-plus years and those systems age out. So what we've done is try to fix what we observed in that 17 million. And as a way you can try to create an apples-to-apples comparison on the two options. And I think that's necessary due diligence on your part. And again, the last, I think the facet of this is really looking at the staffing efficiencies of both options and trying to quantify that as best we can. So we'll come back with you, to you on that.
Anyone else? No?
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for being here.
Appreciate it.
Next, we'll have Kendall Lee and he will give us an update on some of the sore issues that he's been dealing with and fixing.
Thank you, sir.
First of all, I won't take credit for none of this paperwork you're looking at right here. Shannon did that and she does a fantastic job. What we did was took last fiscal years, all the numbers from meters we read to meters that the city read and how we pay the bills, how we collect dollars from our customers. And over a couple of notches is how the city bills us. Long story short on that, first one, and like I said, I won't go over all those details because you can read them as good as I can. But long and short of it, at the end of the last fiscal year, it looks pretty good. If you look at it real quick, we could stop and say we made $66,000 and just stop right there and say we did a good job, but it don't work that way. I would like to do that, but on the next page, you'll see that is how we read meters individually. Just gave y'all, just let y'all see what we deal with on a monthly basis. What we do, our guys go to the meters once a month, first day of the month. They just did it yesterday as a matter of fact. And they go to all these meters that you see on that second page and they get the readings, you know, for a month, obviously. Now, when you get down to the bottom, if you say, okay, well, I look on the first page and this says we had this many gallons, but I look back on the very first page and this says a different number. That's because when we read the meter, we read them yesterday, we read them the first day of the month. The city might read them on the 17th or the 20th. So this reflects both our numbers and their numbers. But the second page, we actually went there on the very bottom of that page and I told Shannon, put the main meter that we send the meter readings to Goldsboro. That way you can look up and see the total gallons we read and then you can see what the main meter sent to Goldsboro was. That difference, there's your I and I. That's the water going in that we don't want, that's the water we want to stop. We also put rainfall amounts for each month and you can easily look at the rainfall amounts and look at the overages we sent to Goldsboro. It almost, you can almost predict, you know, when we're going to have a lot of I and I. So with that said, I'll jump back to the first page real quick. That $66,000 that it looks like we made. Problem is, it cost us almost $70,000 in addition to run the sewer plant. So technically, we lost $3,000 at the end of the year. Well, that don't sound like a lot. Well, that, that don't sound like a lot, but we still have a lot of opportunities to fix that. We've just gone up on some of our rates, and that's not even reflective on this because some of those have just taken effect. The new meters we just put in, they got read yesterday for the first time for a full month. So that's going to come into play. So the next time we do this, I'm even anxious to see what our meters read compared to what the other meters read for what we read yesterday. So what I was trying to, the point I'm trying to make is, like I said, we're, we're still always doing things to make this better. So those, those meter readings should make us look like we make a little more money next time. Also, last week, Mr. Horst, I apologize, we didn't invite you to go smoke with us. The school system, we were going to do it Friday. The school system called us Wednesday and said, man, we got a couple of hours. You want to go smoke at school? Let's go. We went. We went to Grantham Elementary, and I was very pleasantly surprised. Thank you. She's tired of hearing my voice. But, but the, the elementary school was in great shape. It, it didn't have any issues at all. But the, the middle school, brand-new school, didn't have any issues like I wanted to find as far as, you know, a broken pipe or a storm drain going into it. But the, what we did find was that all the air conditioners, drain lines, condensate lines are going into plumbing lines. You can't do that.
That's basically.
They're going in there. So if they're doing it at that school, they're doing it at Spring Creek, and they are aware we're going to go in and fix that. That's going to be fixed. That doesn't sound like a lot. You go outside your house, you see your air conditioner running, that little bit of water coming out of that little white pipe on the side of the air conditioner, that don't sound like much, but when it's constantly running, and you've probably got 10, 15 air conditioners that are as big as this room running, it's probably like a fire hose running. So we, we did find that issue. That's why you smoke. That's why you go check these things. So we, we found that issue and we will address that issue. Thursday, I was, I was off Thursday afternoon. They called them back again, and my guys went and smoked two more schools. Those were most interesting. Brogdon Primary and Brogdon Elementary, Elementary and Middle, found multiple cleanout caps broken off and gone. Easily done, lawnmower hits it, nobody saw it happen, keep on right. But the good thing is, they were at the base of the, the roof at the eaves of the roof. So we were draining drain water, draining roof drains, and they were, they were, they were basically roof drains, you know, clean out. So we fixed those. They fixed them while they were there. So I, just one of those, four inches, can you imagine the amount of water that runs off of a roof of a schoolhouse? If it's going in that pipe, that's a lot of water. So if we can keep stopping those things, guys, we're, we're going in the right direction. We really are. We still got to do Southern Wayne, and we still got to do both our Spring Creek schools. But like I said, every time we find just a little something, it feels good. It's like, yeah, you know, it's just good, so.
Go back to that second page where it says Mormac.
Yes, sir.
In October.
Yes, sir.
September, 600, is that the, I mean, is that the gallons is what I'm looking at?
Or is that? Second page, Mormac, hold on a second, let me get with you.
He says 600 in the September. Is that gallons?
Yes, uh, Mormac, 600, Mormac.
800, 900, 600, then it went to 17,300. And you had seven inches of rain the, the month before, that's pretty much.
That's right.
Rainwater.
That, that's, that's rainwater. That is rainwater. Yes, sir. And like you said, the numbers, just because it don't line up in the same month, that's just the way the meters got read. So that's, that's a perfect example, and it was very, very wet.
What Mormac are you speaking of?
Those, those particular meters there, let me see which one he's reading there. He, he named that one Mormac. That one is landfill. That one is the, let me think.
It can't be much if it's only 600 gallons.
No, 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 that's, that's not much at all. Matter of fact, if I'm not mistaken, that might be the, the meter site, that, that might be our, that might be our lift station. What even calling it Mormac? They, they just made this spreadsheet, and I'm not real sure what they named that. That would be one, I put little green marks out to the side, that would be one of the ones on a typical month that we would charge a minimum charge. Some of them, if they're so small, we were sending, we were sending literally sewer bills for $2 to some places. That's why we came in and said, we're going to do a $35 minimum. That's the reason I wrote that as a green one. That would be just a minimum charge to who that is.
Kendall, whatever that is, you've got a real problem there because if it's 600 one month and.
Right.
And 17,000?
That's right.
And then 4,000 in June.
September, we had a bunch, we had a flood out there in September, so, yeah, that would, that would be, but like I said, these numbers, they'll, they'll make you question some stuff now. They really will.
And in that particular one, you got November zero, is that, did reading the meter have something to do with that?
It has, absolutely has something to do with it. And if I'm not mistaken, the flood messed that meter up, so the next month, you couldn't even hardly read it because we had to fix the meter. So like I said, there's always.
We come up with 3,900, so basically it's 1,800.
Yeah, that's right. That's right.
Kendall, look at Woodland Church Road on June. You got 300 there when it's been into 3,000 range. Why did it drop so much there? Is that just a typo?
Not real sure. I see what you're saying, but not real sure.
I mean, that's kind of unusual.
Those, those numbers, for those two are provided to us by Southern Wayne Water. Those two houses, matter of fact, those, you see it at NA for, for July through November.
Yeah, I've seen.
We, we found those two houses. We, we found, we found a pipe going into one of our wells that I'm like, where's that water coming from? And when we got to question it and check it, there was two houses tied into us that we had never been paid for. And when we met with Southern Wayne about it.
Is that a water meter?
So they started providing us, you know, information for those two houses. That's why that started.
Is that a water meter?
That's water meter reading.
Well, I'm going to tell you, their meter has stopped.
Right.
That's exactly what, it slowed down. There's a problem. I've seen this several, several times, and what they do is come back and back bill you thousands of gallons. When you see that, that meter has slowed down or either stopped.
Sure, sure. In fact, it did, one time, I can't say what it did in July, in, uh, July, but like you said, on that one right there, it didn't look too good for sure. Which then again, nobody might not be living there anymore. I don't know. You know, just you'll never know. Might have moved out that month, who knows? But we, we'll keep an eye on that one too and see. But it, very interesting when you look at the numbers on a sheet of paper like that, isn't it?
Well, how many Mories are out there that's tied into it that we don't know about?
None that we know of. That's what we did, when we did the smoke testing and sewer testing, and you see smoke come out of places it shouldn't have, that's what tells on you right there. So we, we've, we have actually found a bunch that won't.
And I understand you were talking about, when you were talking about reading meters, these are not sewer meters, these are water meters.
A little bit of both. The ones we're reading are sewer meters, but we, we have to rely on a lot of water meters also because everybody doesn't have a sewer meter.
Most interested in Cooper Standard. Cooper Standard, 23,000, 36,000, but in June, it was 1,123 gallons. Is that water or sewer meter?
That's a sewer meter.
That's a sewer meter.
They just, they just filled that building up. They just, somebody moved into that building and started working in that.
What, a million gallons?
So it says.
Is that one of the artesian wells, stuff was that too?
Yes, sir.
So that's going to be.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Is that a sewer, is that a sewer meter there?
That's a sewer meter on that one.
How long we had a sewer meter?
I think.
Three or four years.
Three or four years. So you've been consistently reading a sewer meter, and it jumped from 43,000 to a, over a million?
Yep.
But that's the one where Mr. Barber.
Yeah, that's the 43,000 where nobody was in the building.
No.
That was the artesian well that Ms. Barber told us about. It was in the, under the building, so.
But if you had a sewer meter there, it would have been reading that all along.
It would.
Well, how can it go from 43 to a million?
Don't, don't know. Don't know.
You said they just occupied the building.
They, they've just moved in it. They sure have. Somebody's in it now.
Oh, cool, Eric.
Yeah, I see him.
You didn't change the meter out?
Uh-uh.
I want to see the bill that you send to Cooper Standard. That's what the scream is going to be.
That's right. Couple of more things, not on the spreadsheet, I said, I told y'all, we, you know, we were doing some, doing some smoke testing and whatnot, but with the Hamlet Village, that is our biggest offender. That's the one I keep talking to you about and told you we met with the, with the owner of that one. Hadn't heard a whole lot of response out of him, real nice guy, but hadn't heard a lot of response out of him. So we, I sent him a letter and said, you know, we need to, need to get a little, something going on with this, get this repaired and, you know, said effective next month, the difference between what the customers pay and what where a sewer meter says, we're going to bill that directly to you. Three days later, they were out there marking, now 811 is out there marking lines. They're going to start digging up some plumbing lines here shortly, I'm sure, or so. Hopefully, we'll get that resolved. Last month, that would have been $4,000 overage.
That's the.
Off of that trailer park.
Yeah.
Yeah, 4,000. So I'd like to see that, you know, I'd like to see that just go away. I don't want the money for it. I want it, I want the water to go away. Because that'll make a big difference. That'll, that'll give us a really large cushion on our capacity to the city.
Really, they could go where the line goes back into the main line and just, just run it up and cap it.
Could, could. He'd move two trailers and cap it off, and he'd save himself a lot of money. So, but anyway.
Would it help us if the city would collectively check the meters the same time that we check the meters?
If, if we, don't know how their system works. I mean, you know, obviously, they got to check the whole cities. I don't know how it would be, yeah, it would be nice if we all did it on the same day. It would just make the numbers look the same. I'm sure the gallons are the same, but it's just, when you look at paperwork, it's confusing. We give 500,000, they find 550,000. They might not have went until the day after we did, you know? It just, it gets confusing when you look at the spreadsheet, but.
But if it's all said and done at the end of the year, it ain't going to be off, it shouldn't be off much.
Yeah, water's water. You know, if we can, if we can stop I and I, if we're just, if we're charging them for sewer and we're getting paid for sewer, that's kind of all we're looking for.
But you're missing the point of the meters. So the meters are, so you can identify where the problem tiles are. And if in fact, you coordinated with the city to have the reading at the same time, you'd have some, some basis to do some checking on a monthly basis.
We do the basis, we do that off our readings. We, if, if we see our, our numbers different, like what the city reads, that, that's just for billing purposes. As long as we, we keep an eye on our numbers, and if we see big jumps one way or the other in ours, that's what tells us we want to go look and see.
Mr. Chair, I think overall, just it'd be transparency for, for all of the citizens as well as, you know, the municipalities, just knowing that we all understand really what's going on.
Right.
And I think anybody should want to know.
Sure.
Correct numbers, especially when there's a, a serious water issue in this county, you know?
Sure.
So, is the most, most of the things that you're seeing is smoking is going to be plumbing issues, not more sewer?
Correct.
Mainframe issues or infrastructure issues?
Sewer issues. Matter of fact, on that last page, I just gave y'all a little drawing over to the left. That's as good, good a drawing as I've ever seen on, on why you have I and I. And that little picture shows, you know, you could have a gutter tied into it. Somebody put a French drain around their house and connected, because that's an easy way to get rid of the water tied into the sewer line. It's gone, you know? That, that's a, that's a really good picture there of, of what I and I even is in the first place. So yeah, smoke testing should show you most of that, but if it's underground, like now, raining all day, going to rain all week, smoke don't come through water, so it don't tell you anything. But yeah, that smoking, it tells us breaks and plumbing problems or, or people connected to us that shouldn't be connected to us. If I see smoke coming out of the vent on a house that we're not charging sewer for, I know they're took, that they're hooked up to us, so it'll tell them.
Or gutter.
It'll tell, yeah, that's right.
Ain't believing.
That's right.
Kendall, there's one more thing, excuse me. There's one more thing I'd like to say on this report. I would like to see what Goldsboro is charging us and what we're charging. So we don't lose sight like we did before of the charges that are being made. That's very important because we lost sight of that before. And as long as we keep the cost in front of us and we see any changes, it's easy to detect when the changes were made. Because I don't know how long we went on before, knowing that we were charging less than what Goldsboro was charging us, and we don't want to lose sight of that again.
Right.
So if you don't mind, please put the price on there, what we are paying versus what Goldsboro is charging us.
Sure.
I'd like to study this some more. I will get with you if I see some things I would like changed. I like the numbers and the gallons, but I also like to see the dollar signs, what it's, you know, the results of what this is, you know, is. And it's just amazing when you start looking at the dollar signs, how much more it makes you be aware that there's something going on.
Sure.
And, go ahead.
Billing wise, we're, we are supposedly, we're keeping up with every time they increase, the city increases, we're keeping up, so we're not losing money.
Right.
But we're still losing money because our infrastructure, pumping pumps and, and everything else that we're doing, we're not, we're actually still a, a cost to the, to the taxpayers.
Right.
They, the, the city was looking at going up 15% of this year's budget, and we had that budgeted for just in case, but they never did that increase.
So how, how do we, how do, where do we put our, our money in for infrastructure to replace pumps, meters, that kind of stuff? Is that just something that comes out of our?
Maintenance and CIP.
Okay.
And, and again, if, you know, once we get clarification, a lot of what we can use ARP funds for is, and we're already looking at projects now that we can begin looking at.
The long-term is should, should be self-sustaining.
Exactly.
You know, would that be with, with anything as far as a service, you would hope.
Right.
To a point.
Right.
Especially with. You know, you're going, not going to be, sometimes you're going to.
Right.
You know, but I mean, at the end of the year, I mean, it should be as close as, you know, $10,000, I would think.
Right. With the enterprise fund, that's, the expectation is that, that this service is self-sufficient for capital, for operations, for the whole nine yards. So you don't want to put general fund dollars towards this in an enterprise fund.
Got to support. That was one thing that I've noticed on looking at Goldsboro's videos, that citizens were concerned about. Why did Goldsboro wait so long to implement the minor increases over the years and then all of a sudden come forth and say, hey, we got to get this to make it? And I don't see the county falling to that rut because we owe it to our citizens to make sure that we're capturing what we need and don't have to come at one big time and hit really hard on people who are budgeted. I've always said, when I was town manager, it's easier to do a little bit every year than, than come in and hit you big and strong at one time because that's hard. And when I came on board and I looked at the budget and I seen what was happening with us, I don't want it to happen again. So we got to keep a focus on what we're charging versus what Goldsboro is charging us.
Well, we need to figure out, we need to make sure people understand that this sewer system that people are attached to is a benefit for that person or for that company. Because, I mean, just you take for the, in essence, the trailer park. I mean, you know, I don't know how many lots he had in there, 20, 30, 40?
Probably 40, 50 at one time.
Say 40, 50 lots on a sewer system, you could have put about 15 lots if you had to.
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, that, that's a benefit for that business. And those businesses should be paying.
For sure.
For that service, not the rest of the citizens that are on set. I mean, I, I mean, you know, that's just, that's my opinion, but, I mean, because it's a benefit for that area. I mean, just like, you know, when you go into a, a situation where there'd be a patio-type home setting, I mean, you can put four houses on a quarter acre, or you can put one house on a half acre.
Yep.
So, I mean, you know, so this, this is a, this is a financial, you know, benefit to that.
Kendall, on the side note, I just want to let you know that not all of these, I believe, smoking and making repairs where they can. We're seeing supplies on, doing a bike up right now.
Yes, sir.
So. They're working on it.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, uh, did I understand you to say that there was a sewer meter at Hamlet Village?
There is.
There is?
There is.
How long has there been a sewer meter there?
Three or four years.
Three or four years? My question is, if we can put a sewer meter there for that particular customer, have we researched actually at what level of, at what level would you provide a sewer meter at these other locations?
It'd be nice to put one at every single house, but that's not cost effective, obviously.
Where would it be cost effective? What's the gallons, I guess?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It would probably be a gallons thing and I wouldn't know what that number was off the top of my head, but like your, your big businesses, obviously, you know, the industry, which is only a few of them and all of those have them. Um, and the reason we did that trailer park was, was we knew we were getting a ton of water coming through there, we just didn't know how much. You, you look in there, it's always flowing water. There's only twelve or thirteen trailers there. That's why we put that one there. Um.
Well, you have a black hat on and I'll put mine on.
Yes, sir.
My black hat on is this, why over the last three years have we not been billing Hamlet Village based upon our sewer meter rather than the water meter? Because if we had, those repairs would have long been done.
That is true.
So, I don't think it's an option for us to bill him based upon his water meter. The billing going out next billing has got to be based upon our sewer meter and be done with this.
The, the city, that's, that's actually city, but they, they charge the customers, each customer by their water. So, we could easily say, here's how much water your customers used, this is how much is extra and that's what I told the owner. I said, this will be.
Back up. Did you say there, the city is billing?
The city billed them for the water that they use, just the water, not the sewer. The water that they use.
But why would we use that meter reading in order to bill him for the sewer when we got a sewer meter?
That's, that's the way it's always been done.
Well, of all things to say today, don't say that to me. That's the way it's always been.
No, as far as the water meter, they've always billed customers off a water meter. We, we put the sewer.
We gotta run this business a whole lot differently.
We agree and, and that's the reason why we, we've sent the letter and, and that, that we're trying not to do things as.
Again, I just put my black hat on. That don't make sense.
I.
Why would you bill them based upon another reading when you know what's wrong and billing based upon this meter that we bought and put on there?
But we don't do the billing. Well, the other thing is.
They've always done the billing. We're, we're, we're stepping in now. Like I said, the customer, if you take those, those, I think there's ten or twelve trailers out there. It's probably more fair to them to pay by their water meter because that's what they owe the city. The extra stuff is coming out of the ground. That's not their problem. That's the owner of the trailer park's problem.
You're asking taxpayers in Wayne County to subsidize this man's sewer and that ain't right. That ain't right.
We're, we're changing that and, and we, we agree that, that, and, and again, it, it's something, we get sometimes to change historical. We're, we're doing some a little bit different now, so we are, uh, we are putting.
All right, I'm gonna take the black hat. There's a confusion on that as well now because some meters are billed in gallons, some meters are read in gallons, some meters are read in cubics. So, it depends on, then you got to calculate or work to the gallons. So, sometimes, and that, that's a, that can make a, a disparate figure between.
They're going by cubic feet, now they're, they're reading by gallons.
Yeah, that's true.
And I don't think it was converted over the years from cubic feet to gallons.
Let's clarify something else too. Hamlet Village, at one time probably had forty, fifty mobile homes in it. It's down to, what'd you say, twelve, thirteen? Okay. You say the city builds them for the sewer. The water, the water is from Southern Wayne.
That's right.
So, we've got three different.
It's very confusing.
Very.
Very ridiculously confusing.
Their water from Southern, from Southern Wayne Cemetery District. The city builds them.
That's right.
And we are paying for all of the eye to eye.
That's the, that's the deal right there. We pay for the eye to eye. That's kind of what it's all about.
The county is funding the project then. And we, and we don't have a dog in the fight other than we paying the bill.
You, you summed it all up right there. You summed it all up. That's what our system does. We pay for the eye to eye. Everybody gets paid for the water and a little bit of sewer, but we pay for the eye to eye. That's it in a nutshell.
I'm gonna lend you my black hat. You need to go out there and get this straightened out.
Working on it. Working on it.
He is working. He sent a letter.
Trust me.
We, we're, yes, sir, we are working on it.
Wayne is kind of like you. I don't.
I would like to fix it as fast as me and you're thinking right now, but sometimes you have to take that baby step, but we're making some big baby steps right now. It's, it's about to be a different story, I promise you. Watch me.
Well, we're rooting waiting then.
Well, I'm excited. I see you're enthusiastic, you're very enthusiastic about getting rid of this eye to eye.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and that's a plus and saving the county some money.
Yes, sir.
Kendo, Kendo wants to do this. Any other questions, Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Kendo. I'm glad that we're on this process now.
We're, we're not beating up on the.
I know. I got it. We're in this together. We're gonna fix it though.
Well, we got a new, we're, we're looking at it differently than we have. And that's great.
That's exactly right.
And the understanding, I think everybody's understanding how this process works better than they did before.
Yeah, I think so too. I do.
And, uh, when I went, when I went to Fremont, I mean, I looked at the numbers and I, the billing and different things was done, but it was because of the lack of understanding how the process went. And I'm telling you, I found by goodles of money to survive sewer by finding errors. And I think that's where we're going at now, is finding these errors.
That's right.
And I think one good thing about this is our citizens are finally putting sewer in the forefront.
Yep, exactly. Yep. Well, they're understanding it just like y'all are understanding it. They're like, okay, now get.
They see the importance of, of, you know, the future.
That's right. That's right.
And, and what the general public doesn't realize, most of the general public doesn't, uh, of, of all of the municipalities in the county, uh, the largest sewer system is City Goldsboro. Everybody else is relying on him other than Mount Olive and what, Pipeful?
Fremont.
Fremont goes to Goldsboro. Well, I mean, Yerukas comes to Goldsboro, Fremont's comes to Goldsboro.
Yeah, part of it is.
Uh, Seven Springs comes to Goldsboro, everything out in the Marmack area. I mean, you know, I mean, uh, and it's, and it's just a matter of time. How long is, is Pipeful, you know, if they have any growth at Pipeful, how long is their system gonna be able to, to, to withstand any growth? And, and Mount Olive's on a moratorium. I mean, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's not, and, and the county does not have a sewer facility. I mean, everything that the county is responsible for goes to the City of Goldsboro. And so, we're, we're at the mercy of, of them.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And one more thing, I want to throw a plug out to Fremont too, by the way, while I'm talking to y'all, just so y'all know, we, uh, like I said, we got a last minute call to smoke some schools the other day and our, our smoke machine just quit, just quit, called Fremont. They're like, come get ours. So, they're just so good to work with. They, and we do the same for them, but they are just, just that good to work with. So, I just wanted to get y'all, let y'all know that they're helping us out a bunch and they always do.
Make sure you get yours fixed.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's right. That's right.
One more thing.
Yes, sir.
Can you get Joe a black hat? Just like.
I'll get him one. I'll get him one just like this.
No, I, I need a cowboy hat.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ken. Appreciate it. Uh, next is our consent agenda that we did go over during our, uh, pre-agenda, uh, meeting this morning. Uh, and we present this to you for your approval.
Motion to approve. I have much on the floor. We have, uh, approved the consent agenda. Any other discussion? If none, all in favor, say shot. Sheriff sign a right hand. Motion carries.
Um, next, under new business, uh, motion to accept tax collector settlement for calendar year 2020 taxes in prior years. Uh, and Alan, um, uh, is here?
He is.
How are you?
I'm good, everybody. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, as Craig said earlier in our briefing this morning, uh, this is an annual event. We do this annually per statute. Uh, each county has to do this and it's basically where we ended up on June thirtieth, end of our fiscal year as far as tax collections. Uh, we, you have to accept this and then charge me to do it again next year. So, that's what we're gonna do today. Um. This just says, uh, this general statute states the statute that we have to go by to do this, um, our legal part of it. Here's the important page, um, and I'm pleased, and Allison sort of stole my thunder a little bit a couple of weeks ago. We did a great job this year. Our employees did a great job. Our taxpayers did a great job of sending them money and paying their taxes. Um. I don't know, in the thirty years I've been here, I've never seen this happen and I don't know if it happened before or not. I kind of doubt it, but if you'll see that pretty red number there, it's ninety-eight point three eight percent. That's our collection rate. Uh, last year it was ninety-eight point oh six. Prior to that, it was ninety-eight point ten. That's the highest it's ever been that I know of. So, we had a great collection year this year. I know our employees did a great job. And again, I, I have to commend the taxpayers as well. I don't know if they took some of their stimulus money, helped them pay their taxes or what, but we just had a great year of collections. Um, I really can't explain it no more than that. Just a combination of our, our workers and the taxpayers. Also, um, if you look, the title label, about the middle of the page, all the way over to the right, the fifty-two point nine million, that's what we actually, uh, billed. We collected fifty-two, a little over fifty-two million of that already. So, it leaves eight hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars to collect on the, um, outstanding taxes. So, again, I commend our employees and I commend the taxpayers for a great year. You should be very proud of, but everybody.
You're a joy to deal with, Alan.
Thank you, sir.
He's dressed all in black.
There you go. Just see the hat, huh?
Not a joy, but a work with comes January the first.
This is, that was our current year. This is our previous years. We, we collect back taxes. Um, this, uh, changes some annually, but you can see the collections to date. We had almost a million dollars of back taxes collected as well. So, that's, these are our back year taxes that we're, we're working on as well. From the, uh, year of twenty nineteen back to two thousand, six, we can enforce collections up to ten years old as far as using our enforcement collection methods. So, that's, um, our back years. You'll notice a little bit of vehicle right here in the middle. Uh, that's prior to our new system we're working on now, prior to two thousand and thirteen. We still have a few vehicle bills out there outstanding, uh, that we probably will never collect. Um, we got a few we can find here and there, but thank goodness for this new system. This, this happened in two thousand and fourteen. This is the system now where I've told you many times, this, the work's wonderful. Um, you pay your taxes and tag at the same time. When you renew your tag, you pay your taxes. Prior to this, we, you would get your tag and then we would send you a bill three months later and it'd be sort of like an honor system to pay your taxes until you got blocked for the next year. So, it's pretty much a lag time in the old system.
So, we're at fifty-eight, nine million total now.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Alan, what, before when you were collecting, the percentage was probably about eighty-eight percent?
It was lower than that, sir. Uh, probably about sixty, sixty-seven percent that paid timely.
Yeah.
And by the end of the season like now, it would probably be low eighties if that, if the high center is low eighties. So, that ninety-six point seven percent is actually a little misleading. That's based on a billing cycle. Actually, you can count on about ninety-nine point nine percent collection in this new method. So, that's, it's, it's an excellent system. It works great.
Hey, you don't drive.
Exactly. If, if you don't renew tag, you don't, or you drive illegally, is pretty much what that little point ten percent is that you see. So, we have, uh, we, there was a hundred and sixteen thousand vehicles registered in Wayne County last year. Um. Also part of this, and you'll notice a little disclaimer on the bottom of one of the pages I had up there. This is, this is per our end of year records. This will be audited by our auditors, uh, this fall and Allison, uh, will take care of that for us, but, uh, we feel pretty confident in these numbers. The next page, uh, part of that statute says that we have to show due diligence on trying to collect these taxes and this is what this page represents. Uh, this is our wage garnishments. This is some of our enforcement collection methods we use to collect taxes. Uh, if you'll notice that it's gone down a little bit. Um, a couple of things on that. We were a little more lenient this year because of COVID and it's cause of, um, everything going on. But again, our collection rate was up, so that, that was a good thing. Uh, the bottom figure is we can thank Andrew for those. Andrew does a great job, even Catherine. We have some deals. We, we don't want to foreclose on property. Um, we're not in the real estate business. We don't want that, but a lot of what this is, is air property where people passed on without a will, without leaving the property, it just left to heirs and nobody wants to take responsibility for this property. So, our last resort would be to turn it over to Andrew. Andrew is not an automatic foreclosure. Andrew works for our taxpayers just like we do. Uh, if they're willing to try to pay, he works with them. So, foreclosure is our last resort. We don't, we don't do that unless it's just our, his last resort type stuff. So, I want to commend Andrew and Catherine. They, they do a great job for the county. He's, he's come in and done a wonderful job for us to help collect some of these taxes. They're pretty much be uncollectible if it weren't for him. And that is it. Um, any questions?
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
I just got, uh, my taxes from Carteret County and they have coupons in there where you, do we do that?
We don't send a coupon, but we, we tell people, especially our elderly population, that you can make, you can divide that number by twelve and start in January. You don't have to wait till we send you a bill. You can actually start in January and we want, that's, thank you for bringing that up. So, we want to get the word out, but I, I got one of those as well about little before payments, but, but we do have people, especially on fixed incomes, that they'll, they'll start in January and they'll make fifty dollars a month and by the end of the year they have it paid. It's just so they're not facing that. It, it's a very good idea and, yeah. Feel free, anybody that wants to do that, they're welcome. They don't have to wait to get a bill in August from us. They can come in anytime and make prepayments on that to help, if it'll help their, you know, get it paid by the end of the year. But I did, I saw that too. That was, that's very good.
I got another point on, um, when it comes time to start collecting taxes, the Ormond Street door, you can't, public can't enter through that. I mean, especially with the elderly. I mean, I've noticed some kind of coming up, you know, not knowing it. Do, we need to get the word out or figure out something during tax collection time to, you know?
That's a good point. Maybe, maybe Joel could do something for us, so.
I mean, it's just a long walk, you know, from that side. I mean, because it's twice as long, you know, really. So, just something to kind of think about, especially for the elderly.
Very good point. That, we do have some of our elderly taxpayers that do want to come in and still hand it to us, but they, they want to make sure it gets in our hands. They don't trust the mail or anything else.
I'm right there with them.
Yeah, you're one of those people too.
I call. I want to make sure it gets in your hands when I want to.
That's right. Thank you for that.
I don't want my name in the paper, so.
Thank you for that.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept tax collector's settlement for calendar year 2020 taxes in prior years. Also including motion to approve order directing tax collector to collect the taxes charged in the tax records and receipts for calendar year 2021 and all prior years outstanding taxes.
Mr. Parker, do we, do we need two, two separate motions for this or?
I think he. His motion is fine.
Okay, all right. I have a motion on the floor. Any other discussion? Do we have any other questions for Alan? If no, in favor, Sheriff sign a right hand.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
When are your tax bills going out?
Uh, they're working on it right now. Georgia IT.
Working on it right now.
We're working on it right now. Uh, we're hoping to have them out by probably the third week of August or something like that. And let, let me go ahead and thank you for bringing that up.
If it's August, you know.
They, they are, they are due September first by law, but you have until January fifth of next year to pay without any kind of pencil, penalty on that. So, um, I just want to put it in there. So, if you, if you do get it and you look at the due date September first, don't, don't panic or anything. You've got plenty of time.
Oh, I'll put it off.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, Alan. And then next, number three is, uh, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Video of the Week, uh, the hundred and eighteen annual conference.
That, that, that's an old one. You got some old commissioners in that one.
That one, that one's old. I still had her.
Do we need to call Kev?
I'm gonna burn off on the back wall back here.
Kev. Kev, kids.
That's definitely not gonna do it.
All right, we'll, we'll skip that and then, Mr. Chairman, uh, public comment.
Session has started. Uh, each, uh, citizen that has signed up to speak, uh, you speak, you have a three minute time limit and, uh, do you have anybody to sign up today?
Uh, yes, sir, I do. I have three individuals, the first being a Merle Jernigan. And I believe I need to pass these out to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Merle Jernigan. I live in Pipeful, Arizona, to be more precise. Been living out there about thirty years, uh, next door to Tom and Nancy Gray. Uh, they moved down from New Jersey, bought property next to mine and, and we got along fine for twenty-five, twenty, twenty-five years, no problems. They were good neighbors. Uh, Tom's kind of thought that he don't like to work a lot. In the first few years, he worked this place a few months, complained was back. Got another place, worked a few months, complained was back. Done that several times over the first couple of years. Then he quit working altogether and he hadn't worked any in twenty-five years. His wife, she worked a lot of hours, a lot of time, double jobs to support family and two kids that they had. And, uh, Tom kind of stayed home, was the house mom. Tom's always had a lot of medical problems. He'd go from one medical condition to the next, from one doctor to the next. He, uh, he'd have lupus this week, he'd have something else next week, next week he'd have something else. Anything, he, he, he was just trying to get on disability. Told me that several times. And, uh, after about twenty-five years, he finally found him a doctor and put him on it. And that's where my troubles began. Started seeing Tom out around the house at night with a flashlight shining around the house on the ground, around the doors, around the windows, around the eaves. In the daytime, he'd be out on the yard.
Your house?
Next door to my house. He'd be at his yard. He'd be out in the yard looking for car tracks, tractor tracks, whatever he could find. And, uh, he called me over several times to show me tracks that weren't there. He, uh, he called me over to his horse barn one day to show me somebody had turned the receptiles in his horse barn upside down. I said, well, Tom, how you know he turned them upside down? He said, well, look, that hole right there, it's upside down. He, uh, he called me out over and, and walked, wanted me to walk through the woods with him, showed, showed me where the. showed me where the heavy equipment had come through there and logged his woods overnight. His woods had been logged two years prior to that. They've been, there wasn't that lot. Nobody been through there. He stopped and fell across the road at the bail box one day, and threatened because he was bringing fire trucks from the Hunter Fire Department, loaded with poison over there on his pasture, and sprayed his pasture with killed grass. All kinds of stuff like this, and it wasn't happening. He was claiming that people were using satellites to get through his phone and his computer and everything, to find out information about him and block his security system he had on his house. He was calling the local base. Finally, one day, I said, Tom, I don't see no evidence of none of this stuff you're saying. I said, something's wrong with you. You need to go see a doctor or somebody. And then he got mad with me. He didn't come calling me anymore. And that's when the guns started shooting. They start off with a forty-caliber Glock that he had, and he'd go out all times of night and all times of day, walk around his yard, and he'd shoot. I've seen him pace a motorcycle coming down Morris Road, which runs right beside Neighbor, it's got a letter, and it's got a letter from a lot of neighbors to state what, how it's affecting them. But one neighbor jogs a lot. He's jogging down Morris Road, heard bullets going by his head, right by his head. Now, I don't think that Tom was shooting at him. I think Tom was just shooting because you can't see through a little streak of woods there. But he could have killed a man. And then it got worse. It got a seven-point-six-two high-power rifle. They make a hell of a noise. We lived next door to him. He's a hundred foot off our property line, his house is. And when he shoots that thing, it rattles the windows of your house. Me and my wife both, when it goes off at three o'clock in the morning, you sound asleep, that thing goes off, you literally jump and leave the bed. And there ain't no rhyme or reason to it. He might do it. We done it last night. My wife wrote down the times, did it four, five times last night. It's unexpected. It scares you. You sell a dog with your neighborhood barking. And when they start barking, they don't stop. They talk with each other, then half the And it's not just me. It's other neighbors around. There's eight letters there where people complain. Finally went to Wayne, he's the commissioner there in my neighborhood, and talked to Wayne about it. He said, well, I think there might be something we can do. He said, but we got an amendment to law, Second Amendment right. He said, that stops the law of things. He said, this is uncalled for. We need to get us a, I don't know, a law changed or some, a new ordinance, is what he said. So, and Wayne acted real sincere, real interested in helping me. But six months or so goes by, and I hadn't heard anything from Wayne. He hadn't done anything. He hadn't called me, hadn't said anything. So my wife tried to get up with sheriff, and she was directed to the Captain Huck. And Captain Huck's told us there wasn't anything they could do on County Second Amendment right. Now, all the other counties you go around, they can do something, but they can't do nothing to Wayne County. So my wife finally talked to sheriff yesterday, and the sheriff suggested we come up here. So here we are. Think we need some help. Now, this is fault ain't nothing contributing to this county. Another person that rode a lot of theirs worked all their day on lines, and now they can't sleep at night, neither now. They woke up bam, bam, three, four, five o'clock in the morning. There's something somebody can do. If this was beside your house, or your house, or your house, or one of y'all's houses, it wouldn't last for the week. It'd be done. I know that because Captain Huck told me that.
Mr. Jernigan, we understand, and like I say, I have talked to you, but by our rules, your time's up. So, I mean, if someone else this week needs to talk, you know, that'd be fine.
My name is Catherine Jernigan, and I live at twenty-sixteen, the Hunter Road, next door to Tom and Nancy Gray. This is when he shot last night, twelve fifty-three AM, two fifty-eight AM, seven forty-five AM, seven forty-nine, and seven fifty-five AM. And then I left home about eight o'clock, so I don't know what he did after that. But we've lived there for thirty years, and of course, he wasn't a problem until like the last four, five years. And, you know, I have anxiety just from this because I can be walking out in the yard, and then all of a sudden it goes boom, and your stomach just goes right into your throat, you know, because you're scared. And I called nine-one-one. There are numerous calls. The last time I called, I asked them to come out and check on my neighbors to make sure they were okay. Nobody came. About twenty minutes after I called, an officer called. His name was Officer Garrett, I believe it's him. And he told me there was nothing they could do, that there was not a law against him shooting his gun. He has Second Amendment rights. And I said, well, that might be true, but nobody knows whether he's alive, or his wife's alive, or anything else, you know, because nobody's going to check. And he said, well, this has been an ongoing thing. I see where you've called numerous times about him waking you up in the middle of the night and that kind of thing. I said, well, that might be. I said, but somebody needs to do something because just last week, there was a man pretty much doing the same thing, and he ended up killing his wife, and nobody called because he did it all the time. Something needs to be done. A law needs to be made that people can't just do whatever they want to and disturb the whole county or the whole neighborhood because of a gun right. Now, I believe in having your guns is a right, and I believe in it. But there's a right to being able to sleep at night and have peace and quiet in your own home. And we're not getting that.
Thanks, ma'am.
Good morning. So my name is Meg Kidd, and these are my parents. And I used to live right down the road, recently have moved in the last several years. But I'm at my parents' house quite frequently, helping them at various times with various health issues that they have and that kind of thing. And I'm not typically there in the eleven PM to six AM, but I totally trust what they're telling me to be true. And I know several of the neighbors, and I've spoken to them as well, and I know that that happens. This behavior that is going on from this man happens as well all during the day, happens during torrential downpours. I mean, we've had major thunderstorms recently with lightning and things like that. And boom, a few minutes later, another one. And so what happens is he shoots randomly. He's not shooting at a target. He's not shooting wildlife that's in his yard, you know, as any kind of maintenance. He's just randomly shooting in the air. Now, you don't know the direction in which that's going. You don't know when it's going to happen. And he may only shoot four times in a five-minute timeframe. So then you call the deputy. The deputy comes out, you know, she doesn't typically call during the day, you know. But in that nighttime, when he shoots, okay, by the time you get to the phone, he's done shot second time, third time. He's not going to shoot again when a deputy gets there. And so the deputy says, can't do anything. I haven't heard it myself. But then also, the deputy can't do anything by the way the noise ordinance is written. And you've got something in here that says the maximum permissible noise level limits continues, continuous sound is ninety decibels. Well, you know, normal traffic on the road is about eighty decibels. A gun is going to be somewhere between a hundred forty, a hundred sixty-five decibels. So you're exceeding, well exceeding, the decibels. However, in the noise ordinance, it says that it has to be like for more than a minute in a ten-minute timeframe. But there's got to be something written down. If nothing but, you know, some general comment in the noise ordinance that allows the discretion of the deputies or the sheriff. But the man's Second Amendment rights cannot be the reason that this is okay, because it's not okay. It's not okay for me to go to my parents' house and my mom having an anxiety attack over the fact of him shooting. Or the neighbor across the road who just told me the other day that, you know, I'm outside just doing normal yard work, and I'm going inside because, I mean, I don't know which way he's shooting that gun. And in the middle of the night, the animals that are barking, they're not just the animals that are outside. It's the animals in Mr. Charlie's house who, the animals stay in the house, and they won't settle back down. So they're not getting any sleep. And the same thing with Miss May. So one man has a right, but the rest of us don't. And I really feel like something here has got to be done, rewritten, and some charges need to be made. It's got to feel it. It's got to hurt him in his pocket somewhere.
Okay.
Well, I'm sorry that that is happening to you. Or if I lived somewhere like that, I think that, you know, it would be traumatizing to me as well. I want to ask our county attorneys if they could research maybe an ordinance for habitual shootings, you know, because it's one thing if it's just, you know, a random shot occasionally, you know. That's why we do have shooting ranges where if you want to go and you want to shoot. So maybe we could propose to get some type of ordinance for habitual shooting that we can do something, you know, because this is habitual at this point. They're consistently doing, he's consistently doing it.
What is our ordinance? Does it say anything about, I mean, it's got a time limit or timeframe on it, correct?
Right.
That's basically.
Today, I was not aware that this was an issue. I'll certainly look into it and see.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Allen.
Carol, do we have their contact information?
Yeah.
We got, here we go.
Appreciate you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Carol, is there anybody else from public input? Anybody else from public input? Oh, okay.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. I thought you.
Okay, I'm sorry. No, I didn't. So that's in the public input. County manager's report, again, Dave came up earlier, and I appreciate Dave making that statement and letting us know his concerns, especially with COVID getting worse in our community. But I do want to remind you that we do have lunch scheduled at twelve at the EOC with the emergency management team from the state. So, and that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Ball break up?
I do appreciate Dave coming up here too, because I think the public needs to be aware that this epidemic is still going on. I have family members that don't want the shot, and it just worries me that they don't. I think I'm about the only one in my family that has had the shot, and I surely don't want to bring anything into them because my husband's very sick, and I think that would be devastating for him. Also, I would like to recognize our county commissioner Williams down here for the invite, Sarah D., how enjoyable it was, and how welcomed he made me feel. And he even let me give a speech I'm already for, but that's okay. But it was very nice, and I think it was a big plus for Goldsboro, you know, and he should be recognized for that because it was a big thing for him as well as Goldsboro. Because I think we made the news too, didn't we?
Yes, yes, you did. You got some nice pictures in the Goldsboro Daily News.
Yeah. But that was very good. And what's good for Goldsboro is good for the county as well. Those that are on the tourism committee also, there was a survey sent out. I don't know how many have seen the survey. Has that been made available to the commissioners?
Yes.
Okay. How interesting that was. And I think it should be probably put on our website in some way that the citizens can see what others see in our county. Because it was kind of interesting to me, it's some of the things that they brought for, people from outside looking at our county, and what we can do to make improvements and things for our county. But I found that very interesting. And that's all I have to say. And I do thank Kendall for his report. I think it's very eye-opening, the things that we have begun to see in the sewer, because we owe it to our citizens to make sure that we get this under control, because we don't want to continue how to raise rates because of infrastructure issues. And like I've said all along, what affects Goldsboro affects the county and vice versa. So we got to be stewards of getting our sewer systems fixed and everything. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jernigan.
Commissioner Jernigan. No, I have a whole lot. I did attend the ice storm. For some reason, he asked me that I want sugar-free chocolate ice cream. I don't know why. But it was very good. And I didn't get sugar-free either. But we've had a couple DOT meetings. We were in the process of getting a portion of seventy bypass designated as I-42. So that should be happening in the next little bit. We done the resolution on that last week. And, oh, and the 117 project on the south end of town from Ash Street to Dupont County has been moved up on the list, so that will be resurfacing that as well. I did ask that we kind of reach out to the railroad to see if we could do a more permanent crossover over the railroad tracks. And I have sent a contact that I've got, he may be retired by now, but I've sent it out. I've not heard back from him. So if he got any contacts that we could kind of reach out to him. Sam said that he was going to do something with DOT is going to do the same. So that's all I got. I do want to say one more thing about Commissioner, our former Commissioner, DJ Pelt. He was very conservative, to say the least. He was, I went to church for Mr. DJ for.
Oh, you love.
Well, I've been there for fifty years, and he was always, he gave me a lot of pointers. And one of them, I always remember, he takes four. I said, yes, sir. So he said, I know you're strong opinionated like I am. Yes, he was telling me that. I said, yes, sir. And, but he was a, he was a good man. He was a kind of a matter of fact, to the point. He didn't answer a person, and that's what I admired about him. You didn't have to worry about where he stood. He would tell you whether you liked it or not. And I just remembered our family's marriage. She's not in the best health in the world either. So just remember that family thing.
Mr. Darnold.
Eight years, still talking sewer. Big shout out to Commissioner Acoch for bringing this really to a head. This information that we had here, everybody reads things differently. Here's what I read in this. First of all, we've got a mobile home park that is serviced by Wayne County on the sewer. We installed a sewer meter, yet we're not using the meter for the billing, because supposedly the city is billing them for the sewer. But the water's being built by, who do we say, Southern Wayne? The point is that this infrastructure is the county's. We are responsible. We are responsible, period, for the county taxpayer for that investment and to operate it properly. We cannot, we could not rely upon anyone else reading meters and telling us what to bill a customer for the services we're providing. And that makes sense. No business would possibly operate that way. So we're going to let you tell me what I'm going to bill for providing services. That doesn't make sense. Now, here's the other thing that I'm looking at. And this, thank goodness, we've got some information here and some numbers. Hamlet Village has 160,000 gallons of water. And we evidently determined three years ago that the investment was proper for us to go put a sewer meter there. We just don't read it. It don't make sense. But if in fact we invested the dollars to read a meter of 160,000, then why aren't we putting sewer meters on every one of these entities that we're billing? I don't understand that. Now, I'm really going to put a black hat on. Why would we provide the infrastructure and the cost of operating and maintaining? First of all, it's our infrastructure. Why would we provide that at no additional revenue to the city residents that are using our system? Doesn't quite make sense to me. But we're not determining evidently what to bill them for the use of our infrastructure. This is the biggest convoluted mess I have heard, but that's the way it's always been done. It's time that we take control of this sewer system and bill it correctly. Just because it shows a profit of $60,000, that in no way is going to offset the cost of operating that sewer system. It just doesn't make sense to me. So at any rate, I'm glad to see we're moving in the right direction, but we got a long way to go in a short period of time. And I'm happy to report my wife has gotten vaccinated. So evidently, there are some in our community that in fact recognize that it's been out there long enough. People can see that it's safe and effective and they need to get vaccinated. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It was a long two weeks for the ice storm. We had some great visitors here. We had Blue Bunny. We had their team, the makers. They were the builders who built out the renovation at the ice storm. We had FCBX, which is their PR firm, that came here and they brought a staff of 30-plus people that filled our hotels, that purchased in our stores and restaurants, that, you know, just did amazing job. And, I mean, I'm just, I'm honored that God blessed our business with this, you know, this grand prize. I wish that Goldsboro would have, you know, supported more. And normally I don't try to, I'm not pointing fingers. I just want us all to do better. This was a big accomplishment for North Carolina. We had people to come from Fayetteville, Greenville, Smithville, and even further out in North Carolina. They came because they were glad that someone in North Carolina in their state won a national prize. We beat out cities in LA, New Mexico, the list goes on. And, you know, we didn't get much support from our local merchants. We didn't get much support from the DCDG. And I'm not calling you out, I'm just saying we need to do better. We need to bridge the gap. If there's something that had affected you in the past, leave it in the past. Let's work together. The ice storm is part of this community. We've been here since 2012. We've created summer jobs for kids here in this community. And to be honest, it's, you know, we are probably the smallest company here financially. And we have sacrificed to create some jobs for some kids in the community. And I don't regret doing it. I wish that companies that are in this community would do it, do the same thing, if not more. Because you're going to be rewarded. And that's what I feel like our company was rewarded because we planted a seed. We didn't know where our finances were coming from to pay their salaries. However, God made it happen. And then he exceeded that with a refresh of our business, with PR, you know, talking about our company. I just want us to do better, you know. I won't harm a fly here. That's just not me. No matter what people might have said about me, that's not me. So I just want to thank those great companies. I want to thank our county commissioners that came out. I know you would have been there, but, you know, you probably was playing golf or bowling or something. But I'm just so thankful that we have a good board here, you know, that came through. We had, you know, our chair there. We had Ms. Acoch there, you know, and we had Chris there. He popped up on me, surprised me. And I'm just so thankful, you know, really thankful for the good people in Wayne County and in Goldsboro, the people that volunteer that helped us out, you know. So that's all I have, you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Doherty.
Thank you, sir. First of all, I want to apologize if my speech is slightly impaired. I've gone through some things right now. But Commissioner Williams, why don't you tell them the real secret of your success? Ms. Rogers, she's a fantastic woman, she's doing a great job and congratulations to the ice storm. I'm about to say something that can probably be unpopular with a lot of folks. You know, right now, the UNC healthcare system has mandated that all employees must be vaccinated. There's been some concern in the community. And the one thing I want is to take the lead of Senator Perry. Senator Perry is issuing fight your information, letting individuals make their decisions. And I'm tired of politicians putting their two cents in for whatever reason, you know. We don't have all the facts. We don't know what's going on in the healthcare system. I do because I'm on the executive board here. We had five people in for COVID a week ago, kind of with 20 now. And two nurses in cared for COVID. You know, individuals need to make their own decisions. Politicians need to keep their mouths closed for a change. And I know that's going to be unpopular with some folks, but I think that's where we need to go here. Let individuals and let the healthcare system make up their, make their decisions. Either you want to get the shot or you aren't going to get the shot. Either you want to work or you aren't going to work. That is an individual decision. It is not for the politicians to jump on the bandwagon. And that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
I really didn't have many comments, other than, you know, I did go to Commissioner Williams's ice stream party Saturday for just a few minutes. Won't plan on being in town, but I had something else to come up, had to come back into town, so I attended. Also, the Jernigan family that spoke this morning. I live about, maybe two miles from them. Barbara lives less than that. And Rex, I know Ms. Rex. Mr. Jernigan has spoken to me several times. And he's correct. I mean, I basically told him, you know, our hands are tied. I mean, and I know he has contacted the sheriff department several times. And there is great concern there. But I don't have the answer. I mean, and that's basically what I told him. And I know he was not pleased with the answer that I gave him. But, you know, I'm not, I'm not an attorney. I'm not in law enforcement. I mean, I don't, I really don't know what to do. I know, and the sheriff has discussed it and, you know, he's limited on what sheriff department can do. I don't know, you know, Mr. Parker says it's first he had heard of it. And that's probably partly my fault because I should have said something to him. But, you know, it's probably something that we're going to have to address at some point. I mean, we got the Second Amendment that I feel strong about. But then again, it's, I really think this probably falls back to the mental health thing. I mean, that is, but if you would, you and Andrew would look into something and touch bases with the sheriff because, I mean, you know, whatever's done, Sheriff Pierce needs to be in, you know, knows what's going on so he can try to guide his people in the right direction. But, you know, sometimes we just going down a dead-end road. And again, I'd like to, like Commissioner Gerling said, former Commissioner Pelt, keep his family in your prayers. Nannette, EMS, keep her family in your prayers. And also, I was not aware until the sheriff told me a while ago that, you know, the sheriff in Jones County did pass away, what, yesterday with a heart attack? 52 years old. And he was kind of a friend of mine. I mean, I didn't know him personally, but then again, I did know him. And so let's keep Jones County in our prayers. And that's all I have. Anyone else? We, huh? Okay. Do I have a motion? We go back in closed session?
I move. Same reasons that we went in earlier.
Mr. Sheriff, could we ask that the sheriff join us in this? I'll ask for you. We might be a little late.